Good evening, everyone. This is the city council meeting of March 4th, 2024. Well, our first item on the agenda is our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. So I don't see anybody from the Faith Alliance.
He didn't send us an email today, did he?
Uh-uh.
Yeah. Anyone from the Faith Alliance?
Would you mind, Anthony? Anthony, lead us, and the pledge, too.
Yes.
There you go.
There we go.
Let us pray. Father, we come to you, Lord. We want to thank you, Lord, for blessing us once again to be able to come together as a city, all our leaders, council members, our mayor. Father, we just pray, Father, that you grant us wisdom and knowledge that we handle the business of our city and our community in the right manner. We give you all glory and praise for without you we can do nothing in and of ourselves. So we want to thank you and we praise you. These blessings and favors we ask in your Son Jesus' name. Thank God. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Anthony, for doing double duty.
I'll talk to Larry a little bit later about that.
You'll have to double your salary. All right. Please let the roll call show that all members of the council are present.
So noted.
Next item is our minutes.
Mr. Mayor, we want to approve the minutes of the council regular meeting of February the 20th, 2024, as well as accept the minutes of the Casa Grande Police Personnel Retirement Board of February 16th, 2024.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Claims against the city, item D, D1.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated February 14th, 2024 through February 27th, 2024, as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, claims are approved. Our meeting agenda approval. Mr. Rains, any changes from staff?
We have no changes.
Anyone on council have anything you want to change?
No.
All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meeting agenda is approved. Next, we'll move to consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone who wants anything removed? Anyone from the public? Okay, seeing no one, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor McFarland, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, the next segment is our public comments section. So I'm going to open the floor to anyone who would like to address the council. This will be your opportunity. I would remind you to please state your name and your address, and also understand that anything you talk about is not agendized, so we can't respond. But is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council? All right, seeing no one, then I'm going to close the floor, and we will move to our next item, which is actually item K and K1, Resolution 5626.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve and adopt the Casa Grande Municipal Airport Master Plan and Airport Layout Plan update. City council will recall that last year, on February 21st, we did a study session. Prior to that, you were given a copy of the master plan and had a chance to review that. During that study session, our consultant did a presentation going over the points of that master plan, what was included in that. Since that time, the FAA has had the opportunity to review the document, specifically looking at the traffic forecasts, as well as the details in that layout plan, to make any final changes that needed to be incorporated into that document. They've now approved that, so this is just us dotting the i's and crossing the t's of this process, asking you to adopt the final plan. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, is the delay because of FAA?
They took a while to review it. That's all I can say.
All right, I won't drag them through the mud, then. Does anybody have any questions with Kevin? You all recall the plan that we went over? Okay. All right, seeing no questions, then I'll entertain a resolution, please. Gloria?
Resolution number 5626, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving and adopting the Casa Grande Municipal Airport Master Plan and Airport Layout Plan.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5626 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item is item K2. This is considering approval of Resolution 5628. Scott?
Mayor McFarland, members of the council, we're here this evening as a follow-up to a study session presentation on January 16th, and your overall direction at that point was to bring back the necessary amendments to our city employee personnel policy that would allow a change in how we compute overtime for our employees. As I described previously and in the council presentation, except for certain employees in the fire department that were hired before July 1st of 2006, we observe what's called a productive work period, generally speaking, and that is that employees have to actually work a minimum number of hours before overtime is calculated. And just to emphasize, that's what we've had as our policy for a very long time, and at all times, the city has been fully compliant with every law, rule, regulation, or policy. But the desire was to consider this change this evening, and with your approval of the proposed amendments to the personnel policy, the city would alter our overall policy and how we compute overtime, and we would go to exclusively what's called a nonproductive work period, or nonproductive, well, work period is exactly what it is. And what that means is that all hours credited to the employee, vacation, sick, PTO, all of those hours would be included in the calculation of overtime. And again, there's not a right or wrong, but this is a policy issue, and that's why it's before you this evening. I'll try to answer any questions you have.
Scott, what is the total impact annually? Is it, it's only $300,000? And I say only, it's $300,000? I shouldn't say only.
Plus fringe benefits.
We had calculated, in our department, in the finance department, we kind of independently did our numbers, and the predicted overall impact, based on our experience to that point in time, was calculated to be about $300,000.
That's the total cost?
That's the overtime that we would have paid if we had a nonproductive work period. And Mr. Mayor, I should have pointed out that as far as effective date goes, I know that the council discussed that effective date. We've got some issues that we have to do behind the scenes. We have a payroll provider, we do the front end of payroll and HR, the finance department does the back end, and so after our discussion, I assigned my staff to look at all the things that were necessary to make this happen. And in addition to that, the idea of making it effective with the first pay period in April reserves the fiscal impact just to the last quarter of the fiscal year, and so we're recommending that it be effective April 7th, 2024. Thank you for letting me add that.
Right?
So this is for the entire organization?
That's correct. We'll be totally uniform through all of the departments.
And then, how much are you anticipating in the pay-based fringe benefits? I mean, is that a big number, or?
We talk about fringe benefits, Councilmember Herman, and it varies from sworn, non-s sworn, because of, generally speaking, retirement costs, but rule of thumb, in HR, we generally talk about 25% to 30% in pay-related fringe benefits, workers' compensation, retirement, social security, when applicable, like Medicare.
So we could be talking $400,000 estimate dollars?
I think that would be.
For a year? I mean, I know it's an estimate, and you have formulas to figure that.
Yes.
And with that amount of money, I mean, shouldn't we budget that for the next fiscal year? I mean, just to be responsible.
I'll let Mr. Rains respond to that.
And also, I mean, you know, yeah, we're going forward for that, and how are we going to track this change, you know, going forward if we adopt this policy?
And manage it, too.
Yeah. You know what I mean? Because we already have overtime, I understand, but how would we track how this would affect our fiscal, you know, the fiscal impact of this policy change?
Yeah, so a number of questions in that, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Herman, let me first of all talk about timing and budget authority. Certainly, in the best-case scenario, you would align your policy changes that have any type of a financial impact to the start of a new fiscal year. As everyone knows, that would be July 1. You ultimately then incorporate these additional expenses in your annual budget, and they're calculated at that point in time. Based on the discussions and the feedback that we've received, there appeared to be some level of direction to ultimately start that, implement that policy change this fiscal year. And so in this fiscal year, we would essentially be taking savings that are being incurred in the various departmental budgets, and we would be transferring those savings into our personnel costs to cover the additional costs that we've talked about. At this point in time, and Mr. Barber outlined, we anticipate that it would be about a fourth of what is estimated, so about $100,000, give or take, across all departments. Department directors are prepared to do that if it's implemented April 1. If the mayor and council's direction, if you're supportive of the policy change, and you, in fact, would prefer that we have an effective date of July 1, then we would incorporate those costs into the annual budget process that the mayor and council will be considering in April, May, and June. Does that answer the question on budgeting? In regards to the tracking of this, it is, at least in my mind, if we are, if the question is geared towards understanding what type of additional costs, whether or not our projections were accurate in the course of the fiscal year, it would be a very similar analysis. As I pointed out in the study session, when we had the dialogue related to the potential policy amendments and change, this is something that requires us to sit down as a staff and essentially dissect pay, timesheet by timesheet, to determine whether or not they would have been eligible for non-work hours or not. I anticipate, and we've had several discussions with department directors, I anticipate that there will need to be what I would consider to be management oversight that's going to happen, department by department, on this, to ensure that if there are what I would consider to be scenarios where perhaps individuals are attempting to maximize on overtime, then we would ultimately, we potentially could come back with additional policies, either that being a standard operating procedure within the department and/or some type of a guideline that could, administrative directive that could be, that could provide additional direction out of my office. I don't necessarily know that it would require a policy change on the part of mayor and council. I will let the mayor and council know that we intend to manage this, we intend to evaluate it, the additional costs, but as has been pointed out, when you move to nonproductive, a nonproductive type of a philosophy within your policies, it's going to cost additional dollars. And much of that driver, as I've pointed out, the reality of it is that police and fire, our public safety facilities, departments, actually have the majority of the overtime. I know all of you are aware of that, I'm sure citizens are as well, just based on the course of their responsibilities, and so the largest financial impact will come in those two departments. We have our medium-sized departments that do have, that will recognize overtime from time to time, such as Public Works and Community Services. Their financial impact is not as great on, when you consider the work and how they go about that. But ultimately, it becomes, in my view, it becomes a scenario where we have to, where we have to spend, we have to allocate our time as managers to ensure that we're effectively managing any type of overtime, regardless of what policy we would have.
So I think that our department heads, managers, do a good job of managing that now, because I know it's part of the budget, and we come in with that, and I know it's very important to, you know, to have good employee morale, keep our employees as an incentive, but we also have a responsibility to the citizens to be fiscally responsible with the city's dollars. So we just, I just want to make sure that it's, you know, that we do have a way to do it so that doesn't spin out of control, or that it maybe comes in under budget. I'd like to, I'd like to report that as well, you know, so.
And Larry, before we get too far, so just to remind everybody, this policy change from a productive work period to a nonproductive work period, which, that should warn you to get the get-go in terms of what it's called, nonproductive, sorry, threw that, that's just my little jab in there, is that an employee who takes two days of PTO and then goes to work, the two days of PTO count towards his work week. So even though PTO is a benefit, it's a benefit, it's not a worked hour, it's not worked days, it's not work time, it's a benefit. It's a benefit that we give our employees, that they get paid time off. That's what PTO stands for, paid time off. So now that, if we change this policy, you're saying, okay, you can take your paid time off, count that towards your work week, and if I work five days normally, and my fourth and fifth day are overtime, now I don't work two days, I work one day, and then I'm paid overtime for the last two days, even though I've only worked three days. Is that correct? Am I stating that right?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so.
Mayor, if I might also add from a tracking, before we get too far, the simple answer to that is that you'll see it in the departmental overtime budgets. So the tracking is terms of individual employees, it has to be accounted for in the budget, and so you'll be able to query the department directors who have an overtime line item if you have any questions about that.
But Scott, wasn't it prevent an employee from, this is going to sound bad, but gaming the system, where I work, I take two days of PTO, and then I work three days. I take two days of PTO, and I work three days. That's the part that needs to be managed. You can't have them doing that, even though they might have a lot of time, because they've been with the, you know, with the city a long time. That's the part that I'm worried about, is how do we manage that? How do we make sure that isn't taken advantage of? The other piece is that this is a fiscal, this is a fiscal consideration, and I don't think I've ever been on this council where we have changed a budget in the middle of the year. We always have our budget retreat, we talk about the budget, the managers present their plan, and then it's approved, and it becomes effective July 1. I don't understand who is pushing us to do this in the middle of a fiscal year. Is there somebody who's pushing it to be done in the middle of fiscal year?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the initial concept of amending the policy was generated by our employees. And as I mentioned at the last study session, as we began to do the evaluation of this from the manager's office, it became clear to me that there was a, that there was some paradigm shifts that were happening within other governments, in the state of Arizona particularly. And what we found is that there were certain cities, there were certain cities that recognize labor associations through memorandum of understandings, and those memorandum of understandings were being negotiated to include nonproductive pay as part of the package that the employees would get. And as managers, and some of the managers, as they began to watch that transpire, they've now elected to make it organizationally based, so it was going to be the same policy for all employees. And so as we were having discussions about this with the employees, I took the position that I did not want to parse out specific departments. I did not feel like that would be the right move for our organization, and so essentially I suggested that if this was going to be a policy that was going to be a policy amendment that was going to be recommended to the elected body, that it was going, that we were going to encompass all departments. And so that essentially was the, but it was, and Scott talks a bit about previous employees. At one point in time, we had a policy that exempted fire personnel from productive pay. Up until 2006, none of their employees, all of their employees were on a nonproductive pay policy. Everybody else was on productive pay. And in 2006, there was negotiations that took place with that particular department about other types of changes that they wanted in their work schedule and the like, and they ended up moving away from productive pay. That was what was essentially negotiated, for lack of better words. It wasn't done through an MOU, it was a verbal understanding between the city manager's office and that particular group. And so they find themselves in a scenario where they have a hybrid, where any employee before 2006, they're already reaping the benefit of a nonproductive pay. Anybody after 2006 isn't. And in essence, you begin to see how that tipping point evolves. But as far, it was, the dialogue was initiated by the employee, by employee groups into my office. I basically suggested that I would not feel comfortable bringing a policy amendment of this nature for one particular group, and elected to expand it to all employees.
And I think that's fair. I think that's, if we decide that this is what we want to do, whether it's productive work period or nonproductive work period, that it should be across the board. Philosophically, I have a problem with it, so, I mean, but I've stated, I've stated my opinion to you before.
Jeff?
Larry, just a couple of clarifications, because I don't like productive, unproductive overtime. The bulk of this is public safety, who are scheduled to work these hours. So if these public employees did not take PTO, or did not take vacation or bereavement during the year, we'd be paying this $300,000, because that's time they're scheduled to work. Am I correct, sir?
If they had not taken any time off, you are right.
So the city benefits $300,000, because our employees are taking bereavement, vacation, and PTO, time that they've earned, but they benefit because they're having to make a decision to take time off and lose their pay, what they would be paid if they're working, correct?
Under that particular analysis, yes. I do want to make sure that we're clear, Councilmember Lavender, on the pay that they would earn. Obviously, in the fire department specifically, they are eligible for an overtime benefit simply because of the pay periods that they are working, the 56-hour work week.
Right.
And so your analysis is right in the scenario of when they do, if they're post-2006 employees, that is correct.
Yeah. So this isn't an employee working at Circle K, or the other example I heard at McDonald's, where somebody doesn't show up to work, and we go up and say, Donna, can you stay late tonight? You're on overtime. And in situations like these, there are assigned work hours, that if they didn't take the time off, we'd be paying the money anyhow.
Is PTO assigned work hours?
They're assigned to work during that time. They take PTO because they've earned the time off, no differently than I take vacation or I have PTO at work. I've earned that time, but I'm still assigned to work, but I get deducted that day. So there's no way you could play your three-and-two game very long unless they've earned 100 days of vacation, which means they've been working a lot for us over that period of time.
Donna?
Okay, so a couple, a couple things, and I know this affects the budget, and I understand where Matt's coming from in respect to the July 1 budget versus now, and I agree with the mayor, you know, we have a budget that we go by and that we need to follow that. This affects our directors and managers, because as the mayor was talking, you know, as a manager, I have to make sure my employees are following the rules and protocols and things like that. That's my responsibility, so they're going to have to do that. So like Jeff said, playing that game, if you have a responsible manager, that's not going to happen, and that's where the city manager comes in. I will say that this is a retention effort. You know, I work for the county, and they have gone over and above to try to retain employees, because we're losing them so fast to other cities and stuff. So when I look at this money, I look at it as a retention effort, because if we have somebody here for two or three years, and we've invested thousands of dollars into, you know, them learning their job, just for them to take and go someplace else, because, you know, they can't, and it is time, it is time earned. I've earned my time. I just came back from my sabbatical. I have earned that over 20 years with the county, and they have rewarded me with that for all the hours that I have worked. And as an employee, a government employee, I appreciate and I value what they have done for me, and I think that my loyalty to the county has shown that, and I think that that's what our employees deserve as well. And it is about employee satisfaction and making sure they're taken care of, and we don't want them to not use their PTO if they, you know, if they're sick. We don't want them to come to work if they're sick, because that, you know, that takes other people into account. I am very much for this, I have been all along. My only issue I have is I truly feel that we need to be responsible to the budget and to the people that, you know, pay us to be here and make those decisions, and on July 1, with our budget, to give our staff time to prepare for that.
Yeah, I'll just go back, Matt Herman said it, all this is going to come back, our managers just have to do their jobs, and I believe they will. They will. I believe that, and so I'm in favor of it as well.
Bob?
Yeah, I'm in favor of it as well, and I wanted to say, some of this is a change in philosophy, like Donna said. I think the employees, the staff, feel an ownership on that PTO time. Like you said, they've earned it, they own it, they should be able to use it without penalty, and that's what this ultimately does. It contributes back to that productive work period instead of penalizing them for it. And I will say, too, Scott, I don't know what year it was when we went to productive work period, but I believe prior to that, we got overtime, and I remember all the grumbling back then, and didn't think it was fair. And maybe that was one of the transitions, I don't know, but I know that's what the employees want. I was also going to say, the dollar amounts that we've heard for this partial year, I don't believe are out of sight and undoable, and as a former department head, I don't know if it's still this way, but I had a total dollar figure to run the department, and I could transfer those around with the city manager's approval, so something like this wouldn't put me out of budget. It was absorbable within the department, and I suspect that's the same now, but I don't think that number is so big that we're going to go out of budget.
It is our job to make sure we manage the budget. That's our job, and not spend taxpayer money that really isn't budgeted. So I hear you, you can move dollars around, but is that the right thing to do? Is that the responsible thing to do in terms of our budget? And what we approved, we all approved it back in June and July, so, anyway. You had something?
No, I was just going to say, Larry, I appreciate, you made a comment, you said something about being fair. I think we should be fair to everyone, everyone, and I believe that this will be fair. Now, of course, there is some work that has to be Now, of course, there is some work that has to be done behind the scenes. We understand that. But this, we're thinking about our workers and all that they do for us. And so I appreciate you saying that, though, being fair.
Lisa.
And I agree with my fellow councilmembers here. And Mayor, I understand your concern and how you've outlined it. And I, you know, when you look at what the cost is going to be and, you know, similar to what Councilmember McBride said, you know, this is an investment in our employees. And, you know, I know having a business, how difficult it is getting employees and getting people, especially where we're located. I mean, we know we're a great city, you know, but sometimes it's tough getting people to, to work here. So I think it's a competitive edge, you know, having something that, that may be a little different, but it looks like other cities are moving, you know, this way as well. So, you know, I, I, like Councilmember Lavender said, you know, it is a, you know, earned benefit. I, I think it does need to be monitored to make sure that people aren't taking advantage. But, but I, you know, I'm sure once, you know, the managers have a, you know, their, their program or processes in place, we'll move forward. So I understand, you know, as far as April 1st versus July 1st, you know, in a way, maybe this last quarter will give us an idea of where those numbers are. So it might be a little bit helpful for us to put that budget to, you know, I mean, a couple of months at least, you know, numbers to help us in that budget process. But, you know, if, if it's something that we feel that we need to wait to July 1st, you know, I, I would be good with that, you know, approve it and then wait. But, but I think though, that last quarter could help us in our budgeting process as well.
Any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Matt.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons brought it up. How many, do you know how many cities around the state, any idea, are using this or?
I, I don't know the exact number.
But quite a, I mean, you say quite a few.
What, what you're going to find in, in our area, I, I really do think that they're likely the trendsetters, the cities that are recognizing, are utilizing a memorandum of understanding. It is, it, and, and to get a context of that, let me just say this, that productive pay policies were put into, in my opinion, they were put in, on the books to, to control overtime. They, they were put on the books to, to assist organizations with, with, with costs, right? With, with their budgets and the like. And there was, there was likely a period of time where all 91 cities had productive pay policies of some sort on the books. And, and, and to the point about trends beginning to, to, to change or beginning to see a trend, there are, there are a number of those cities primarily in the, in the valley and/or that are, are in some type of a meet-and-confer type of a environment that you're beginning to see more and more of that being included as part of the dialogue in those negotiations, whenever that may come up. We, we will be one of the early implementers of moving the organization to a full policy. And so I would tell you that off of my memory, there were two or three cities that had done that in the valley. We did, after we initially queried the, the valley cities and began to better understand what this, this change in philosophy, we recognized that it's unlikely that every city in the state has, has made these adopted, has adopted this change. And moreover, what we did find as we were doing our analysis is that we saw a number of cities that had a bit of hybrid. And what I mean by hybrid is that, for example, they would recognize a vacation day or paid time off as a day that would be considered productive for overtime calculations, but they were exempting sick leave and other types. So you get, you, you've got cities that have a variety of different policies where they recognize benefits differently in what is and what is not considered productive pay. Again, in my view, when you start to move into a scenario like that, it becomes very difficult to manage and track. And, and I don't know that you could write enough management policies to navigate around people attempting to utilize that. So, you know, once we began to gauge the idea, the thought was, let, let's not go to the hybrid process and, and create more issues for ourselves. That, again, that is certainly an option that the mayor and council could have. But at least from my perspective, it, it becomes a bit of an administrative headache to manage in the long term.
And I, I want to commend you, Larry, and the department heads for all the managers, like, like everyone said, Councilmember Edwards, everyone, but also for making a policy decision and also, i- if, if we do this, and also for the entire organization. Because we do need to value all, all the employees equally because they are, without them, there's no city to support our citizens. So it's important.
Just to get a point of clarification, because I think we're, there's two different things we're deciding. One is to change the policy and two is the effective date of either April 7th or July 1st.
That is correct.
So do we need to vote twice or do we just?
No, we just need to change the resolution.
Mayor McFarland and Councilmember Lavender, I think ultimately you have two options, right? The traditional sort of Robert's Rules of Order is you move the item as it is presented. If you, in, in the past, when we've had ones where it seems like every council member is in favor of it, you know, you can also move it with an effective date, but then you're voting just on that. If anyone wants to change that, the traditional method is to move and second it and then have anyone else move to amend it. You'd vote on the amendment first and then you would vote on the policy as a whole. So you can do it either way. If someone wants to move it with an effective date, someone else could move to amend that effective date. But one way or another, if there's a split on that and you want to vote separately on the effective date, it would be through the amendment process to the resolution.
Okay. Well, I'll entertain a resolution, but I'd like an amendment to it. Hey, I never get, I never get to give, I never get to give a amendment.
Resolution number 5628, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the March 2024 policy amendments to the city of Casa Grande personnel policy.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of resolution number 5628 as presented.
Second.
Mayor McFarland, I move to amend the motion to be effective July 1st concurrent with our budget year.
Second.
All right. Is that acceptable?
Who was the second to the amendment?
Donna.
If, if you'll give us just a second, July 1st is obviously the start of the new fiscal year, but it helps to align with a specific pay period as well.
What I would suggest, as I'm hearing it, it was, and I'll let Mr. Barber and Mr. Rensway in, but we would add at the end of the first paragraph to say, this change shall be effective as of the pay period, including July 1st of '24.
Thank you.
I believe it'll actually start on June 30th.
Yes, I think, I think you're right.
Okay. Is that all right, Scott?
So pay period.
Yes, Mayor, we don't accrue payroll. So when you approve changes, general adjustments to employee pay, okay, it, it, it's the first pay period in July it hits. So that's, that's the concept or that's what we're trying to achieve.
Okay. Can we just say June 30th if that's it?
We say the first pay period in July.
I think if we just include the, the pay period, including July 1st, then that'll make it very clear for them as to, whatever that is. Pay period ends on July 1st, then it's, it's then. If it, if it starts on July 1st, it's, it's then. But it is very difficult without going through that whole process to determine. And because people's work weeks are different, generally ours do all start on Sunday as a standard work week, I think it's easier to do a pay period, including July 1st. But ultimately, it is your policy.
That's what I meant to say was the pay period, including July 1st in my amendment.
I meant to say.
So Brett, can I ask Brett an amendment question?
I'm probably gonna ask, yeah, go ahead.
Brett, can we vote no to the amendment but yes on the policy?
Yes.
Okay. Are we, we're gonna vote twice then?
We're gonna vote once on the amendment, assuming there are no amendments to the amendment. We'll vote on the amendment first and then you would vote on the resolution as a, as a whole.
Thank you.
That was your question, too?
I did, yeah. My amendment was seconded.
Yes, amendment was seconded, so we'll vote on the amendment first. So you want to do a roll call vote, Gloria, on the amendment?
On the amendment. Councilmember Lavender.
No.
Councilmember Huddleston.
No.
Councilmember McBride.
No.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
No.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards.
No.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
And I will go back to vote on the resolution.
So then the resolution wouldn't be April 1st.
April 7th.
April 7th, whatever it is.
April 7th.
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
I'm gonna vote no, only because I totally disagree with the policy in the first place and I would have liked to see in July 1st, so no. All right, next is our reports and I'm gonna start with you, Bob.
No report, Mayor, just looking forward to your address on Wednesday.
Lisa.
As we all know, it's scholarship time, a lot of scholarships for our high school seniors. Just a reminder for anyone who has a senior here in Pinell County, the Caesar Chavez Committee is going to be awarding again. We're in our 18th year awarding scholarships. We'll be awarding about $40,000 to $45,000. So if you have a senior, please get on. You have to email your application by March 8th and then it has to be postmarked by this Wednesday if you're mailing it in. And the, the information is caesarchavezpinell.org. Gloria is actually taking some of those on, on the email, the applications. So please get that in. Just, Chief, you know, thank you for having us, for your, your awards. I mean, it's so nice seeing all your great employees and it was so great to see two women get the dispatcher of the year and firefighter of the year. So go, go women, yes, I love, love seeing that. And then the cactus flying, great day out there. You know, you just, you know, remember how, you know, the airport and, and all the activities out there, but there were some really cool airplanes and automobiles out there. And that's it for me, Mayor.
Anthony?
Just to piggyback off of Councilmember Fitzgibbons, Chief, wonderful banquet for our firefighters as well as communications. Truly, it was a wonderful banquet. Food was excellent as well. And it was good to see the retired firefighters. It was good to see them. And so, so thankful to have the opportunity to be there and celebrate that, the awards with them for job well done, that they do behind the scene that a lot of people don't know about. And so, so thankful for being invited to that.
All right. Thanks, Mayor. The fly-in, I, I did get to make that on Saturday, it was great. I got a lot of compliments about the airport from the participants in the fly-in too, so. It was good, everyone's pretty happy with it. And then the youth commission had a Garden of Sunshine event on Saturday that went well. And the GoFundMe that was set up for the Bob Mitchell Memorial already has over $5,400 in it. So, so don't forget to look at the GoFundMe for the Bob Mitchell memorial plaque out in front. And I am going to talk about this on Wednesday in my presentation. It's the inaugural Southwest Taco Fest, featuring Roger Klein, The Peacemakers on March 30th and locally-made tacos, salsa's, mariachis, food, beverage, lots of fun. So tacos. So we'll talk about that on Wednesday.
Something to talk about.
Roger Klein and The Peacemakers.
They get their stuff back?
Yeah, they did, they did get most of their stuff back, they got it stored, yes.
Donna?
Well, I'm actually on Australia time, which is Wednesday morning. So I don't have any reports other than to say that, you know, when I was in New Zealand and Australia, I was really proud of the artwork that we have in Casa Grande because I couldn't stop comparing all the different cities and stuff and what they had. And so we, we have much to be proud of. I did want to just mention for us to keep Joanne Platt in our prayers. They, her and David are constant here in our community and always attend and she is struggling, so just to keep her in our prayers. Thank you.
No report, sir.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. I don't have a whole lot, just to remind everybody that we do have our Stay of the City. Thank you, Bob, for mentioning that. But Stay of the City this Wednesday at 1:00, it is open to the public. And my fellow councilmembers and I will be giving you all an update on everything that's going on in the city, so I look forward to that. Yeah, I got it. And then we have the plenary event coming up on March 21st, or that's the deadline.
You meant to say Plan Air.
Plan Air, sorry. It's a calling all artists for the, where is that? Oh, there it is, okay. Thank you. Snake would have bit me. March 30th, so artist registration's at 7:30. Painting begins at 7:30, goes till 2:30. And there's free kids' activities, there's art sale, there's free hot dogs, so come get your hot dogs. Yep, it's the same, same thing. So that's about all I've got. There's a, a lot going on in the community, but we'll give everybody an update on Wednesday. Anything else, anybody? All right, thank you, everyone, and meeting adjourned.